Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us to live in this county, to work in this county, to do your business in this county to the best of our ability and for the benefit of all the citizens of this county. We thank you for these blessings. We ask that you bless those who are in need, those who need solace for the loss of loved ones, dear Lord, and for this august body, that we may do our best in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Barnes, could I get a roll call, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Bernie Hamby.
Present.
Charles Jennings.
Present.
Chuck Cook.
Present.
Jackie Brown.
Present.
David Marr.
Present.
G.P. Callison.
Present.
James Upchurch.
Present.
Great, we do have a quorum at this time. I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes council for July the fifteenth, July the twenty-ninth, and August eleventh.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or corrections? Here none, all in favor, right hand. Minutes approved. At this time, do we have any speakers that have signed up? Come before us.
Uh, no speakers. No, we have public comment after the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we will enter into a public hearing.
So moved, Ms. Jeff. Second.
Any further discussion in entering in public hearing? All in favor, right hand? Okay, you have someone that's signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to go out of public hearing, what I hear.
So moved.
Second. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have a, uh, we have a second ordinance. There's, uh, did no one sign up for either ordinance?
No one signed up for either one.
Okay, alright, great.
So, no, no discussion, so all in favor coming out of public hearing, right hand? Good deal, now we have public comments.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have Matthew Searls.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is having a great day.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it has come to my attention that I was told by one law enforcement agency that they do not investigate another law enforcement agency when it's come to rudeness and unprofessionalism. But I did get a nice letter from Captain Jones stating that I am supposed to work with this agency. This has been going on since January of 2021. And when I spoke with Captain Jones today, he did call me back, and people are saying if your title or your lifestyle comes below, come before, taking care of subordinates and people that work up under you, that says a lot about you. But if you put your lifestyle before that, you are not the leader that we elected you to be. But if something was done wrong and it was brought to your attention and nothing has been done about it, that mean not only was it done wrong to me and you did nothing about it, but you're wrong too by addressing it and saying that law enforcement is hiding behind a badge, putting fingers in people's faces, towing their cars, and basically saying it is alright to do it. But if this was brought to my attention, and SLED sends me a lot, nice letter, "Mr. Searls, you need to work with the McCormick Sheriff Department about their rudeness and their unprofessionalism, but I was told I need to file another formal complaint." Why would I do that? The first complaint was another answered. I received an email, and the people that I filed a complaint against, their name was not on the list. But I hope that this is being addressed, and if I see you doing it, that's to my face. What are they doing behind our back against the people that are law-abiding and doing what is right? But if you slap me in the face, am I supposed to feel that? But then you say wrong is wrong if I addressed it back in 2021. Two letters from SLED saying that it was only rudeness, but if you put your finger in my face and say, "Oh, Mr. Searls, I am the supervisor, but as a supervisor, I'm not questioning you as a leader, but if you don't address the issue, it's only gonna get worse." A female was slammed on the ground, and the only thing Captain Jones could say, "Mr. Searls, did you witness the incident?" "No, I was up the street. I heard the commotion." But we see people doing wrong and we don't do nothing. That mean we are wrong too, and God bless America. Have a good day.
No one else has signed up.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, we will enter into our decision-making items. The first one is a Resolution 02-25, recognition of South Carolina Army National Guard 117th Engineer Brigade. Council consider Resolution 02-25, what I hear.
So moved.
Second.
It should be no discussion, all in favor, right hand? At this time, I'd like to call Mark Warner up to the front, and I'd love counsel to come down front. We gonna, I'm gonna have Mr. Warner recognize our National Guard officers here, and then I'm gonna do a resolution presentation to them, and we'll get a picture.
So, we have three members of the National Guard with us tonight. These gentlemen were responsible for the earth-moving project at the airport. Thank you, Hubert. Come on up. Captain Mendez. Everybody knows, every military unit owns its own sergeants. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen. Come on.
Need rest of the council, please.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That wasn't clear.
If I stand down and say, "This place is the sun's hit."
That's sun's hitting.
This Resolution 02-25 recognizes South Carolina Army National Guard and project partners for these services at McCormick County Airport Safety Project. Whereas McCormick County Airport originally constructed in the mid-1980s during the development of South Island Lake villages, then offended from the South Carolina National Guard resources at its inception, now begins a major safety and infrastructure upgrade through the Airport Capital Improvement Project. And whereas the safety project planned in collaboration with McCormick County Council, South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, Maze Way, will ultimately improve safety and operation capacity through future additions such as hangars, fuel facility, terminal, security fence, and the like. And whereas through the National Guard's innovation-driven training program, multiple South Carolina Army Guard units mobilized to execute the perennial full earth-moving and grain operation included. One twenty-second Engineering Battalion, the one-seventeenth Engineering Battalion, the one-twenty-fourth Engineering Construction Company, the Survey and Design Team HAC, the seventeen-eighty-second Engineering Support Company, the twelve-twenty-sixth Utilities Deployment, the twelve-twenty-seven Concrete Section, and Distribution for Two FSC. And whereas CSH is deployed significant resources to this project site, including eight D7 dozers, five scrapers, one hex, excavator? I said that right? Two, uh, two sheets, two compactors, two motor graders, one fuel truck, and a water truck consuming up to an average of a thousand gallons of diesel per day, distributing fifty feet by acres and moving approximately 286,930 cubic yards of earth toward a target of 300,000 cubic yards despite fourteen point nine six fifteen inches of range between bay first and due to the still range. Whereas the total strain and weight of equipment utilized, you see, at seven, seven hundred thirty tons, and the cost savings in McCormick County from these efforts projected at four point seven six million dollars. Whereas the dedication and skill and endurance of South Carolina National Team, all demonstrated by extension of its elite crews of eight, nine highly experienced operators, additional weeks, ensuring exceptional progress under challenging conditions. Therefore, it be resolved that McCormick County hereby expresses its deepest appreciation of the South Carolina Army National Guard, all project partners, and the citizens of McCormick County who's wholly cooperating made this milestone possible. But this nineteen days of all is a big one. Appreciate you. Thank you. This is what makes America great, right?
Well, we've got everybody up here. We've got one more little thing to hand out.
Okay.
Now we're gonna pay y'all.
Right.
But each one's got all the money.
This is for council. This is a challenge coin, signifying the project. Guards participation.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just a brief comment about Maze Way. I remember meeting with them, Mr. Jennings and I, what, eight, eight or nine years ago? They're talking, so I'm talking to them. I'm trying to recognize you folks, uh, when we first met, uh, this was a, this was just a dream and idea we never thought would ever come to fruition, but, uh, thanks to the National Guard, this was made possible, and it's gonna add to the future economics of this great county in which we live. And it just, I'm overwhelmed to see these guys here, and men and women that have worked so hard out there in those conditions that they were. Alright, number two ordinance, twenty-four oh nine, an ordinance admitting the McCormick County zoning ordinance, ordinance twenty-one oh eight, in McCormick County zoning map to change the zoning district designation for property identified by McCormick County Tax Map 1130502009 from forest agriculture to mixed use. Council considered this the third reading, what I hear.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out, this was, um, something that's been recommended to us by the McCormick County Planning Commission, and will aid in the further economic development of the, of US 378 West, and, um, strongly urge that, that we adopt this.
And I would comment too, that for people that's wondering what this is approving, it's approving a commercial gunsmith out three, uh, 378.
That's correct.
Alright, no further discussion. Could I get a vote that all approve? Right hand. It carries. Thank you, folks. Excuse me. Ordinance twenty-five oh five, an ordinance admitting in McCormick County zoning ordinance, ordinance twenty-one oh eight, in McCormick County zoning map to change the zoning district designation for the property identified by McCormick County Tax Map 1390000024 from forest agriculture to commercial corridor. Council would consider these, this to be the second reading, what I hear.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to point out that although the, um, the county planning commission did not recommend approval of this ordinance to council, this is a procedural matter that is necessary to move this matter to a public hearing and third reading in September, but does not necessarily indicate council's, um, support or approval of this, uh, of this ordinance.
Mr. G.P., can we get some legal advice?
Yes. This ordinance, um, right now is up for second reading. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended that it not be granted.
That's correct.
They actually recommended that to, to council, that it not be approved. So it's up to council whether you approve it for second reading, um, and go to, as Mr. Cook said, a public hearing and then third reading, or if it doesn't pass second reading, it ends.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I was, wanted to make sure that's the proper way to do it. Alright, so we've had a discussion. Can I get a vote that all support this second reading of this ordinance? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have two all opposed, right hand. Okay, so it does get, it does get canceled. And that's mainly because of planning and zoning recommendations. We depend heavily on that board to, uh, that's why they are appointed for us to make those type of decisions. Uh, ordinance twenty-five oh six, and ordinance admitting ordinance thirteen oh seven, to increase the solid waste fee to be applied to the cost of the management and disposal of solid waste generated in the county, and McCormick Council considered this to be the third reading? All in favor?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion?
This been needed, Mr. Chair, for a long time, because aside to the cost for solid waste, the county council been taking forms out of the budget to, to take care of solid waste with the price continued increase. And that, we started this solid waste back in the nineties, and, um, had never increased.
Yes, it's the first increase.
It's the first time.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would simply point out that this is a twenty dollar increase, uh, from eighty dollars to one hundred dollars, uh, per annum, but the increased revenue that these, uh, this higher fee is going to bring in doesn't come anywhere close to covering our, our, our costs of solid waste disposal. Um, if we were to try to cover those entire costs, uh, this fee would have gone up to around a hundred and fifteen dollars per annum. So, uh, I'd simply echo the comments that have been made, is that our solid waste disposal costs are going up, and, uh, this increase will at least help us defray a significant portion of that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. At this time, all in favor of this twenty dollar increase, raise your right hand, please. It carries. Thank y'all very much. Council to consider authorizing administrator sign the memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice Detention Complex for physical year 2025 and 26, what I hear?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is something we do annually.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would simply point out that this agreement is necessary because McCormick County at the present time does not have the facilities, uh, to properly detain any, um, juveniles who are arrested for, uh, for various crimes, and the, uh, the costs of housing these juveniles in a, uh, a separate detention under this contract is far less than, than having to, uh, over a period of time, build a facility to house them. So, uh, this is something that we have been doing every year and, and need to continue to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
One more thing to just want to point out, in addition to the ragler, um, DJJ, there's also provisions in this contract for short-term, which doesn't cost anything to us. So hopefully some of the juveniles that we will be seeing will be those that we can send to the facility that doesn't cost us the hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. But that's part of this contract as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I address one issue on this? This is, this is the same agreement that we sign every year, except, uh, one little difference is, uh, which I guess is a major difference, they've added a capital expenditure charge of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, in addition to the fifty dollars, uh, per day, per dam for, for keeping the, the juveniles. And that's limited to twenty-five days. After you, if, if, uh, you pay that for twenty-five days, that ends at one twenty-five, and it's fifty, but they doing, they're doing that because of the investment they happen to make in the capital improvements of, of the DJJ facility, and there's really no choice in the county. Because as Mr. Cook said, we don't have, we don't have facilities for that. As, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much. Great information. All in favor, right hand? It carries. Council consider authorizing economic development directors submit a grant application for design and building services, bidding services of the airport perimeter fencing to the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission in the amount of fifty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars total project cost. There, uh, three thousand two hundred and seventy-two grant requests with seven thousand dollars, seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six local share, what I hear.
So moved, Ms. Jeff.
Second.
Any further discussion on this grant application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think this, uh, this perimeter fencing is vital to the modernization of the, uh, the county airport, and I strongly support this. However, I do have some, some doubts, um, that the, the fencing proposed, if the, the map is correct, um, is sufficient in the long term for, um, for protecting the entire airport facility. And, um, I don't know that this needs to be addressed. I think we're, we're going, um, with the, at least the minimum fencing requirements that we need, but, uh, I think they're, my, my personal opinion in this, looking at the, uh, the map that's been provided to us and the extent of the fencing, is that additional fencing will probably be needed in the future.
Mr. Warner, hey, can you address this concern?
He's a private sketch, I think. in this airport improvement project. It does not enclose the entire piece of county-owned property on the, um, it would be your map southeast corner, where, where it's not, doesn't include all of that, but it, it will cover us probably for ten years at least, in my opinion. Looking at my engineers to see, I'm crazy or not? Longer than that, thank you. Uh, yep, so, valid concern, but, um, the additional property that's not included in the fence, um, we haven't even thought about what needs to be.
Done next.
Done with that. Um, so, I, I think we're good for now. I will point out, and I don't know if we need to make, suggest an amendment, but in the, um, in the numbers of fifty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars total project cost, the next number should be forty-three thousand two seventy-two, not three thou, three thousand two seventy-two, with a local share of seven thousand six thirty-six.
Now, the, Mr. Warner, my only question about the fencing, was that the area where the trees were moved, in the property that we acquired from the pollards, but the fencing is actually protecting the runway, the flights in and out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I kind of figured, alright.
Mr. Chairman, I'll officially make that, um, that amendment.
Do I get a second on his amendment to correct this amount on our?
Second.
Any further discussion on the correction to forty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars grant request with a seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollar local match? Here no further discussion. Do, uh, all in favor of the amendment? Raise your right hand. So it's, we have amended it, and now I need a, uh, vote on, um, this, this requirement as amended, the forty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
So moved, Ms. Jeff.
It's already been moved.
So, you just need a vote.
It's already been moved.
You got, you passed the amendment, so now you have a vote on the original.
With amendments.
With the amendment, it's already been.
All in favor?
Favor, yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Council consider reappointment of Mr. Jennings to the Glean's Board representing the public sector, his, and his position, uh, position for many years, and has done a very good job, what I hear?
So moved.
Second.
Should need any discussion at this time, all in favor, could I get a right hand? Council to consider the reappointment of Angela Garrett, uh, to Glean's Board representing the low-income sector, what I hear?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor? Right hand. Council to consider sponsoring the South Carolina Association of Clerk of Court, Clerk of Court, and register these annual fall conferences. This fall count, uh, conference is gonna be all the clerks through, and all the counties of state, and they're gonna meet at Hickory Knob. So I think this is a great idea to showcase Hickory Knob and our great county, so, uh, they have requested that we do five hundred dollars support for the activities, what I hear.
So moved, Ms. Jeff.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, the only, the only question that I have about this, uh, you mentioned a five hundred dollar request, um, I'm not, I'm not sure I see that in here.
Oh, not the amount.
Not the amount.
Right. Or at least a sponsorship.
Yeah, so, uh, if there is, if there is a specific amount that has been requested?
No, it was a recommendation to donate five hundred dollars toward the conference.
I under, I understand, but, uh, I would, if we are gonna provide, if we, if council agrees to provide the five hundred dollars, then I, I suggest, and I make a motion to amend this, um, simply to indicate, uh, council, um, considers responding to the clerks of, uh, court, et cetera, in the amount of a five hundred dollar sponsorship.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
To amend? Did we get a second on his amended motion?
Second. That just makes it a little clearer.
Yep, no problem with it at all. Uh, any further, we've got a first and a second, any discussion on the amendment to change the wording of the sponsorship?
This will change.
Yes, sir.
They want the five hundred dollars, so.
That's right.
So that'll be a goal, McCormick County, he's in McCormick County, for all the other forty-five clerk of couns, of council, gonna be here, and that is an honor for McCormick County.
It is.
Sure occasion, McCormick County.
And she.
It'll be a goal sponsor.
Good deal. Uh, so now I need a vote on. Good deal. So now I need a vote on the amended Mr. Cook's amendment. All in favor of the amendment, that's the $500 sponsorship, right hand? All right. Now, we need a vote on the $500 sponsorship as it was amended by Mr. Cook. All in favor? Right. Thank y'all. And we got a proclamation. McCormick County Strong Day.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings, you want to address it? Just a proclamation?
Proclamation. So, I'd like to make a motion to recognize McCormick County for all, McCormick County providing all, so let's be grateful to the county. It's showcasing McCormick County. Economically, we need to be doing more and more, trying to sell McCormick County to other people can look at us, see what this county is doing, and this is what people want to invest in McCormick County. Because that's what it's all about, bringing some more jobs throughout the county, bringing, keeping some of the younger people in McCormick County. It's where they're tracking other young people to McCormick County. That will have people for the future of McCormick County to take care of people like me, senior. And the other people that ain't got old yet, but I have got old. So I'm going to need some help in a day or two. And so you're going, and people like me can't help me. It got to be a younger group of people. And so this is a great asset, and we recognize McCormick Strong Day, all the things it can do.
You made a first. I have a second on this proclamation.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I have, I don't recall having heard this song. And my principles indicate that normally I should not approve something that I haven't seen or heard. Now, I see we have the author and our songstress in the audience, and I would beg our indulgence and ask her to sing that song for us before we vote.
You want me to play it?
Okay.
Can't hear it.
Lake to the fields where the cotton grows. The heart of our hometown is what everyone knows. Through the trials and the storms, we stand together. Because in McCormick, we're bound like the strongest tether. From main street to the back roads, the love we show. We lift each other up and let our pride overflow. McCormick Strong, McCormick United. In the face of the challenge, we are undivided. McCormick, oh McCormick, go. Together we rise. Together we grow. In every smile, every handshake, every song, we find the strength to carry on. The spirit of this land where our hearts belong. In McCormick, where we all stay strong. In the morning light, dreams on our sleeve. We embrace every moment, no plans to leave. With every heartbeat, with every new dawn. Sold up McCormick, forever strong. McCormick Strong, McCormick United. In the face of the challenge, we are undivided. McCormick, oh McCormick, go. Together we rise. Together we grow. McCormick Strong, McCormick United. In the face of the challenge, we are undivided. McCormick, oh McCormick, go. Together we rise. Together we grow.
Yes, sir. That was quite awesome. And the only thing lacking is one of those videos of our lake and flyover. Add that to that song, and I think we've got us an anthem for our county. So that's a great job who's put that together and add a little bit more to it. I'm very proud of it. It sounds great. All in favor of this proclamation? Right hand, please. Carrie's easy. Awesome. All right. This time, Ms. Brown, committee report.
First thing I wanted to mention is I passed out to council copies of proclamex resolutions, ordinances regarding the Bailey Bill. I was in conversation with the Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development, Mark Warner, about this bill called the Bailey Bill. Other places have adopted it. And what it does is allows historic and/or national register places to have like a property tax cut if they do renovations and rehabilitations. So what I gave to you guys are samples of what they did in Camden, what Richland County has did, and what the municipal associations has said about the bill. So it's just for information tonight, I'd like you guys to review it and for us to maybe do a workshop with town council. It goes hand in hand with the county and the town passing a ordinance to allow businesses and industries who meet the requirements and the standards to take advantage of the property tax savings and also other grants and programs they could not get if they did not have this designation. So it's just for information, if you guys would review that, and maybe we can get together with town council and do a workshop on it and see if it's something that everybody thinks we could benefit from or not in our county. And as far as the rest of my report, I participated in the Christmas in July. I met with the administrator. We had our individual meeting. It was a very good meeting. Attended a call meeting here for county council, and with all my other fellow council members, attended the South Carolina Association of County Council Members Meeting the first week in August. Also attended the special call meeting out in Savannah Lakes Village for District Three. Attended the, one of the forums for candidates who are running for third congressional district up in Greenwood. And I think that's about all for now.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the council special call meeting and executive sessions, the third county council district town hall meeting at SLV, which I think was very well attended, and I thought we had some very good participation and discussion. I provided Mr. Upchurch a tour of Savannah Lakes Village. He had gotten a very cursory tour, but I gave him what I hoped was a more thorough tour so that he could understand some of the facilities and amended amenities that we had there, and followed that up with a lunch at the River Grill with Mr. Hamby and Kirk Smith. Attended the town council meeting, the planning commission and CPW monthly meetings. Did two coffee and conversation meetings with Sheriff Chad Cox this past month. Did attend the South Carolina Association of Counties' annual meetings in the Isle of Palms. It was, I think, at least in my opinion, this was, I think, my fifth, fourth or fifth time. And I think the presentations down there this year were the best, I think, that I have heard of all the sessions that we've been going to. Attended SLV board meetings and two PAC meetings. Attended the West Carolina Annual Meeting and Election up in Abbeyville. The Patriots' Day and Boat Parade at the Plum Branch Yacht Club, the Christmas in July celebration. Two webinars, one from the Rural Infrastructure Authority on their grant program for the coming 12 months, and one with the Census Bureau, which dealt with a new system they have brought up, their emergency management program hub, which brings together virtually all of the data that they have collected and are collecting in terms of census, community surveys, and everything else. They have brought that online so that emergency preparedness and emergency disaster teams can call up that data and zoom into those specific areas that are impacted and for which they have responsibilities. It provides an immediate and significant wealth of data, and I certainly hope that the county adopts that, that we get training in that, so that if we do have another emergency disaster, we can have that as a, use that as a database. I think among my constituents, the water supply issue and the delays in completing the town's streetscaping project have been the major concerns that have been expressed, along with some of the water drainage issues that we faced with the, after the long rains that we've received this past month. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Moore.
I went to the retirement party for Officer Robbie Coker. There's some very heartfelt speeches from Sheriff Cox and Daniel Gibson. We're losing a great officer there. He's going to be missed. I went to the coffee and conversations with Sheriff Cox, and then after which I visited the Humane Society, where they had volunteers from Fort Gordon. A lot of the folks from the military came and volunteered their time to help out with some odd and end jobs around. And we're very appreciative of them coming and helping like they do. And also attended the Christmas in July.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jennings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jeff. They were stated, I attend the annual conference, and we know how the traffic down at Isle of Palm. So, that give them two more years, Association of County will move up to Murray Beach in 2028, and that will give you a little bit better parking. So they look forward for that. We got two more years at Isle of Palm, which is, like been stated, the transportation and everything went well. It just, the traffic is just need to be improved. Officer around the council government still, the great things here in McCormick County have been out with the agent, providing service and delivering meals, and also some government service, training, workforce development, as well as transportation. And keep the finger crossed, because they do need some buses, and they in the top stream, to be able to get to, if they can come over the matching bones. Also, Officer Van Dees sponsoring a job fairing. This one is the larger one. They got over 71 employees going to participate in this job fairing. That going to be this week, the 21st, August 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Piedmont Technical College, at the Mc Ford Building. And also, that we talked about the, I mean, side ways, study increase. So down at Jackson South Carolina, the Street River Headquarters, it's time for them to do, build another sale. Because you got to follow DHEC guidelines, and it's just expensive. So this sale going to cost somewhere around $27 million, that nine counties involved in it. So we could see a $2 increase in tonnage fee, and that'll be passed on to Tri County, then Tri County will pass it on to McCormick County. It would pay according to the population. We don't know how much it costs, but it will be another increase in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jeff Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had a lot of questions about the penny sales tax, and so I just want to give a brief update on this. Last year, voters approved a capital project sales tax. The sales tax is projected to raise about $7.3 million over the next seven years. Now, right now, we're collecting about $250,000 per quarter. There are two things that will determine when a project is allowed to move forward. The first one is the funding has to be available, and the second is the order of the project. We have a very large number of projects compared to other counties. Voters approved 17 projects. And you can't start like Project Five before Project Four, and so we're having to go in order. I'm currently on Project Three. We will soon begin Project Four in the next week or so. We currently have funds for the first five projects, and that's due to money being left over from the prior penny sales tax. Again, you have to go in order. So if you have a project, that's at the end of the list. If you are Project 15, 16, Mark is 17. You have to wait for the prior projects to have started and for the funds to be available. So again, we had some money left over from the prior penny sales tax, but we're only receiving about $250,000 per quarter. So it's going to take some time for that money to accumulate. There are some funding mechanisms available to speed up that process, but it's pretty expensive. I spoke with some financial consultants over the past week, and it would cost a little over $1 million to get the money upfront to move forward on all those projects. And so that's something that myself and the council will discuss over the next several months on how to move forward on that. But right now, we're moving forward with the first five. Many of these projects, I would say almost all 17 projects involve 17 different organizations. And so trying to keep up with all of those is definitely going to be a task. But as soon as we get to Project Five and the money has been expended, the board will, the council will then decide how to move forward. And so I just wanted to provide that quick update to the community, but also the council as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're very fortunate, very blessed to carry over close to $2 million from the last one since sales tax project. So that gave us a good head start. And the way we were looking, we were first, Department of Revenue said 280. So the first one just come in at 250.
So I think it's expected to, that number to increase over the years. We received about 240 something, I believe, in the last allocation. So it slowly increases over time.
And so our logic was to spend the money that we already had in the bank. And with the quarterly payments around a quarter of a million dollars, we can chip off each project as this money's coming each quarter, because that's every four months. So until we get to some of the larger amounts, we'll possibly toward the end would have to do a bond or borrow some money. But the council will make that decision. So very good. Glad you updated on that. Speaking of updates, I know personally seeing a lot of activity at the microtech, at our spec building. I had texted Mr. Warner about trying to get an update, but he didn't see my text. But it's looking, we've been told October, November, but Mr. Upchurch thinks the end of the year, that it'll be functional. So that's going to be a great event for us when that place starts hiring folks. Definitely been waiting on it a long time. us when that place starts hiring folks, definitely been waiting on it a long time. At the, I too thoroughly enjoyed the conference, as Mr. Cook said, it's one of the better ones that we've had, it was actually the fiftieth anniversary of the Home Rule Act, whose, Home Rule actually allows council like us to govern our, our constituents, to govern our county, versus fifty years ago, it was basically done by a legislator, a senator from each county, and so that was, that was a big event, and it gets better and better each year. I know, I know, another thing that I enjoyed was, we had a excellent class on emergency management services, a lot about Helena and how it impacted our counties, there was a board, one guy that really impressed me from Saluda, just amazing, the programs and the expertise and stuff that we want to bring to our county. Speaking of EMS and MA, I do want to thank our animal EMS director, Ms. Sherry's back there stepped up to help us out as we search for another EMS, MA, M, EMA director, so thank you for stepping up. And also, at the conference, we have the, we have the opportunity to meet with just about all the engineering and construction companies throughout the state, and I know Mr. Upchurch, Olive Davis, all of us talked with the engineering firms about our water issue. Mr. Cook is very, very serious, and there's a lot of people, I gave them my card, so Mr. Upchurch, they're calling me, wanting us to set up some things for us.
I think in about two weeks, we'll be meeting with them.
Okay, good deal, so that's another thing most people don't realize when we go to that, is we do meet with all these different folks that provide different type of services for our county, and speaking of the water issue, I'm going to bring up just briefly that he's, I said, Mr. Upchurch just mentioned to me about engineering, but I'm still really looking forward to trying to put together a group shortly to do a contingency plan if we do have further failure of the water system at Calhoun Falls, and you probably already beat me to that, too.
Yeah, another update, so I'm meeting with Abbeville and other providers next week, so we'll talk about some contingency plans that they have in place.
And now, long, after you talked with those, that's kind of what I was waiting on, I was still like for us, council to meet with CPW, also with the information you get from Abbeville that, that way, and we can come up with a good plan to help, you know, resolve the anxiety that the public's facing with the uncertainty with Calhoun Falls, so, good deal, that's all I have. At this time, I'm going to need a motion for council to go into executive session, council go into executive session pursuant thirty-four-seven of South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy-six, as amended discussed contract on personal matters and to receive legal advice. We will be entered into executive session to receive legal advice concerning opioid litigation, processed food litigation, and initiative, this initiative litigation, council may take actions on matters discussed in executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion on entering executive session? Hear none, all in favor? Thank you, folks. Thank y'all for coming, we'll be out in a little bit.